Yeah.
Kevin, have you led meetings before, Kevin?
Uh, no.
Do you want to?
I haven't led a meeting here, but I have led some meetings, yes.
If we don't have a chairman, would you be willing?
Sure.
Yeah, I haven't led anything since I've been left the Crescent City Planning Commission, so.
Yeah, the, the meetings I used to have were a heck of a lot bigger, or I was the vice president of the one, the other. Our city was about the size of Eureka when I did it.
What city was that?
It was in Indiana, it's called Town of Shererville. Their motto was the Crossroads of the Nation.
Oh, yeah? What brought you out to California?
Well, actually, I moved west with my wife, ex-wife, because her family all migrated from Illinois over there.
Yeah.
So, um, here with me, guys. Hello? It is. What? No, I don't, thank you. No, no, I'm not. Doesn't matter Mark or me, either one.
Let's go Kevin this time, if you're all okay with that. I nominate Kevin.
Okay. Well. We get to the meeting agenda in front of me here, okay? Okay, I don't know if I have a gavel here, but I'll call the meeting to order tonight on August twenty-fourth at six oh two P M. And we'll start with the flag salute. As we all know, it's not, uh, that we can't all buy by standing, but let's just say the pledge allegiance together. By pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic, which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, Katie, could you, um, do roll call, please?
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers is not Commissioner Site.
Here.
And also, we don't have Commissioner Wells.
And, uh, real quick for the record, if Commissioner Rogers shows up, I will default to his leadership when he should, if he should come late. Is everybody in agreement with that?
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Okay, I'm trying to look at the meeting in minutes here. Where are we at here? I think we have to have approval of the minutes at this time, right?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the August, is it August tenth?
I second that motion.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
And Commissioner Site.
Yes.
Okay, I believe at this time, we will be opening up, um, our comments from the public. And, uh, the members of the public may be heard on any item of interest that's not on the agenda. The speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And please be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take action on issues presented during oral comments. And I see that Katie has got the number up on the screen, so if anybody is online with us, they can call at this time, and Katie, you'll push them through, I'm assuming. You're muted, by the way, Katie.
Doesn't look like we have any call-ins.
Do I need a motion to close the comments?
So moved.
Second.
Katie, do we need a roll call, or can we just move on with the agenda at this time?
We do not need roll.
So then I guess we can go on to our next, uh, point on the agenda, which is the consideration of a recommendation to the city council. To amend the general plan land use designation from commercial to public and amend the Fortuna zoning map from neighborhood commercial. Uh, N C to public facility P F at twenty-six hundred Newburgh Road, which is A P N two hundred dash four five four dash zero two. And A P N zero four zero dash one nine three, three, dash zero zero five. Um, at this time, Liz, is there anything you'd like to address with us on this matter? And Liz, you're muted. There you go.
Okay. Um, is this, am I, so I'm going to, um, have some slides, but I don't think they're on the screen, are they?
Yes, they are.
Oh, great. Okay, so yes, this is a proposed rezon of a, uh, three-quarter an acre parcel. Located at Newburgh Road and Rona Ville Road. And, um, so this is a larger sort of area map, and the parcel is, uh, it was formerly the, um, your physical therapy building. And it's been vacant for a couple of years. The city does have a proposal. I think the city has actually purchased it, so it was the city's plan to. Purchase the building and relocate the Fortuna Police Department into that building. But following, um, design plans and remodeling plans to bring it up to, uh, you know, current safety police, um, department standards. And, uh, when COVID, when the COVID, um. You know, the isolation first started, we needed to create space, the police department needed to create space there in extremely cramped facilities. Uh, yeah, at, here at City Hall at Eleventh and, um, L Street. So the logical thing was to move into the old Eureka Physical Therapy Building because it had offices. And at that point, they just moved their, you know, their basic equipment into the building. So that, that really, you know, precipitated the relocation, and it worked out really well for that purpose. And, uh, now they're operating in there, I, you know, it seems to be functioning really well. But, um, you know, just for purposes of land use, um, it's just a good idea to clean it up. It does, so the current zoning is. Um, neighborhood commercial and, um, actually, they could apply, we could issue them. A conditional use permit, and, you know, retain that, uh, neighborhood commercial zoning. But it really doesn't make sense if we're going to go through, you know, the, um, legislative process. Through the planning commission and the council, uh, you know, the, the cleaner thing to do would be to, um, relocate, you know. Uh, rezone the property to public facility. Public facility zoning does allow, um, all kinds of. You know, public uses, including police departments as a principally permitted use, so it's just a better fit for them. And also Newburgh Park, which you can see adjacent there to the east. Um, has that public facility zoning, so it's just a matter of expanding that zoning somewhat onto that point seven acre parcel. And you can see the location there at, uh, Rona Ville Road and Newburgh Road, so, you know, the location is appropriate. It's, uh, you know, Rona Ville Road is a major city thoroughfare, and Newburgh Road is a commercial road. Um, they just have a lot better access and easier to respond to calls, especially. You know, going south, um, you know, to Lawndale and the Camden Heights and, and Rona Ville area. Uh, it's just much easier for them to serve the city rather than coming from the, you know, the downtown facility, which is really cramped and more trafficky and harder to get out of. So it's a, it's a really good fit for them. Um. And here's just a close-up of the parcel. You can see the existing building, parking lot, you know, there's ample room, and I will be showing you the plans. So this is the rezon map. Um, so the existing zoning is neighborhood commercial, and you can see the public facility to the east. And then all of the surrounding, um, zoning is, uh, residential, whether it's low density R A twenty. The higher density R one six, R one ten, which are single family, and then to the west is a multi-family zoning. Um. But again, this is a continuation of that public facility zoning. And, um, you know, this is just going to bring the city's police facility into conformance with both the zoning and the general plan land use designation. What happened? Oh, okay, so just a quick, uh, for zoning purposes, I'm gonna, this is also going to require general plan amendment. Um, just to, uh, you know, when you change out of a one commercial zone and into a public facility zone, the general plan designation is different, so. Um, sometimes you can stay within that category, but in this case, uh, we're going out of the commercial category, so we're going to go to a new general plan designation. Um, but the, for the zoning comparison, um, the existing neighborhood commercial zoning is on the left, and the proposed zoning is on the right. And this isn't your packet, it's really just shows you what the existing neighborhood commercial purpose statement is. Um, you know, it's really for localized commercial, um, activities like stores and shops and things that serve the immediate, um, residential population. So there will be the loss of that, you know, on a, a pretty small level, point seven acres. Um, you know, as far as the neighborhood goes, you know, going from the physical therapy to a police facility. Um, you know, both of those actually serve the neighborhood, so police facility provides security to the neighborhood and, you know, access to whatever needs you have. So, you know, they're not actually losing any kind of a service, it's just changing the type. And of course, public facilities for the orderly establishment of a range of public uses. And then the princely permitted uses, which I kind of just described, um, and then conditional uses down at the bottom. So that's just kind of for comparison purposes, so you understand what the change will bring. And then this is the general plan map. This is the existing map that shows the green is the public facility or the public general plan designation. Residential very low, residential medium, and residential low, and then the red is the public facility. Or I'm sorry, the, um, commercial, and then that would be changed, the screen would be extended into that area. And there won't be an increase in the density, we're gonna look at that, the general plan, um, establishes the density. There won't be an increase in the density because there is no increase in the number of parcels or residential development. Um. And then with the new public facility designation, um, it will, you know, with the change of use, there are general plan policies that. Uh, will be met because of, uh, public use, and let's see, I have those, so this is the, just a comparison of the definition for commercial land use. Commercial centers, retail services, professional administrative, basically, um, you know, it's gonna be similar to that neighborhood commercial zoning. And likewise with the public, now we're serving, uh, the public use. So again, there's still a benefit, it just changes the type, and obviously, um, this facility is an essential use that serves the bump public well-being. And then the general plan policies that will be met, there are plenty of, um. You know, safety types of policies, providing essential services, um. Improving, maintaining and improving critical response times, providing adequate facilities. Um. Meeting, let's see. This meeting, um, staffing levels, promoting a healthy balance, including, um. Institutional, um, public use. So, and then as far as the site itself, you know, utilizing that building is an infill activity, it's encouraging the recent redevelopment of a, a blinded or underutilized structure. And the way that that building came to be vacant is that, um, your physical therapy relocated, so they downsized. And they're now located in the Strong's Creek Shopping Center, so they are still. Or is, no, I think it's the Redwood Villa Shopping Center, so. They are still in, um, operation within the city, serving the public. So this is a image of the plant, the site plan for. The, um, the police station remodeling, so you can see the existing developed building, and that is a. Uh, five thousand six hundred forty-five square foot building, and the, you know, the main part of the remodel is interior. So they will be, you know, um, possibly relocating walls to create more efficient office space. They're going to have, uh, meeting rooms, multipurpose rooms for meetings and trainings, um, they'll have a. They'll have a separate entrance for interviews. They're gonna have, they're gonna update their equipment. So they'll have improved radio and computer systems. They're gonna have room for dispatch, which is much needed. They're incredibly crowded in the city hall office. They've really outgrown that space and. It's really hard for them to function well, you know, with so many bodies, so many people come in and going, so many people needing office space. As well as just that. You know, just the safety, safety feature. So in this case, they're gonna be able to retrofit the building. So it'll have a better evidence room. It'll have better armory, generator, security fencing. And, you know, all kinds of upgrades like that. So it's going to give them modern equipment. And say, you know, really top of the line safe equipment as well. As well as allowing them to expand their area. And then the darker brown shows the, the building addition. So it's a pretty small addition, nine hundred fifty-five square feet. And that's going to be for storage and. The generator and a couple of other things. So then, on the site, you can, they're gonna have new fencing. It's going to be partially concrete CMU block. So it's gonna be safer. And they're gonna provide landscaping. They'll have a public entrance and then they have. They'll have two entrances on Newburgh and then an entrance on Ronaville Road. And then, you know, the building itself, the exterior of the building is going to get an upgrade. They're not going to remodel the, the existing walls. But they will, you know, be painting and landscaping and adding. The CMU block wall is just on the Ronaville roadside and then the rest will be chain link. And then the front will be open. So it's gonna look really nice when they're done. And, you know, it's gonna be much easier in and out access. And yeah, I think, you know, the council is excited, city staff is excited, and I know the police department are excited about it. It is in design now and their plan is to have, you know, have the, the building plans checked and then go out for bid. And be in construction. As soon as they can. So we should see some activity around there in the coming months. So California Environmental Quality Act. Basically, so it is an existing building with minimal expansion and there's no increase in the city's employees. So there's no, the outcome is not going to be immediately expand any employee or, you know. Staffing levels and no change in the level of service as far as how, how the media area is impacted. And it won't result in any potentially significant impacts. Impacts resulting from the development of the site itself with the commercial development. Those, those policies were evaluated in the general plan twenty thirty program EIR. And this site was developed with a single, with a commercial building when that EIR and the general, for the general plan was created. So the change in the use from commercial physical therapy to public facility will not create any new or increase the degree of existing impacts. And doesn't propose any specific development that could contribute to impacts that were not already addressed. Including things like traffic, air quality, biological resources, population or public services or other resources. The project conforms with an infill sequel exemption, which is allowed. When the site has no valid habitat, it's less than five acres, no. Oh, that's repeated there. No significant effects relating to traffic noise or quality or water quality. We did consider the traffic and the noise in particular and the traffic levels from the police station. Will actually be the same or less than the commercial activity that was there before, which had a more consistent traffic flow. From employees and customers. So with the police station. You know, the, the crew comes in, you know, at the shift change and then they go out and do their. You know, their, their route and their services. They're not at the office. And there isn't as much of a flow, you know, there aren't any customers, although certainly there are public visits. Noise levels. It's for police response. It's considered that the sirens are, aren't gonna change. Because they're, the sirens are really run when the police cars are already out on their route. So they don't normally leave from the police station. You know, and we've worked here at City Hall, you know, all these years with the police station on the same site. And there probably is not one, one per day at most, if that, you know, so. There isn't, there is, in that regard, there's not an impact to the neighborhood from noise increase. And then the other infill exemption is that the site can be out of go serve by utilities and public services. And of course, those are on the site. They're within, you know, water service and other, other utilities are in, in Ronaville Road at this time. So with that, I will turn it back to the planning commission and answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions or do we want to open it to public comment first? Should we open the public comment first, Liz?
Sometimes you, I think you guys typically do ask questions of staff and then open it to the public or either way it's fine. As long as the commission has opportunity to ask questions at some point.
Well, about the three of you, anybody have any questions of Liz at this time?
I just have a comment. Should I wait till we're done to comment?
Go ahead.
I just wanna say I'm so thrilled that the police station is going to be moved to that area. I live down, you know, well, off of Ken, Kenwood. But going down, going home on Ronaville Road, it's such a nice presence to have the police station there. And I, I just wanted to say I'm super thrilled. I think it's a wonderful thing that's happening.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I like it too.
I have a question for staff. Is, so the police department, you might have said this and I might have missed it, but they will eventually, they will not be in the city hall building at all. Once this is complete, correct?
That's right. That's right. They will move completely over, including dispatch.
And other departments need the space that they're gonna vacate, I imagine.
Yes, that's the plan.
Yeah.
You know, I, I had a question that ties in with what Mark is bringing up. I was thinking about this with our police chief. Isn't there times where he needs an office at the city hall to be able to converse with some of the other individuals that are in, in office there? Like Sue, you know, mayor or others. I mean, is that gonna be kind of included for him to have at least a small temporary office there yet?
That's not my understanding that he, I mean, we have, we have a really nice little, you know, conference room. Where we normally meet. He does come to City Hall and he meets with the city manager in the city manager's office. And then, you know, he'll have his office at the new location where he can receive visitors as well. So it's, I don't believe there's a plan at all for him to retain an office here.
Okay. Any other comments or questions of Liz or Katie at all? If not, then I think at this time I'm gonna open it up for public comment and questions. Katie, could you post that phone number online for us? And folks, there's the number. It's one six six nine nine hundred nine one two eight. And then you type in that meeting ID code and password or passcode and Katie will get it and forward it to us. I don't think anybody's on tonight, are they, Katie?
You're doing great.
Thank you. I'm just curious, was there a lot of notifications put out? To the neighborhood with regards to this plan of action? And was there any responses?
We have not received any comments. We did, Katie sent out the notices. Then she mailed them to all the property owners within three hundred feet. As the municipal code directs and then we posted it in, and it was also published in the Time Standard and posted on the website.
Will, will there also be notices in other, to the neighbors in other phases of this?
I know, once this is done, the next phase would really just be the building permit, which we don't notice.
Okay. And did the neighbors get ten days? Is that what the code?
Yes.
You guys followed, okay.
And my other quick question, I'm thinking about it. Are we gonna get a design review or is that? In the near future, once they get the approved plans that they wanna do?
A couple of things. I did, I had to double check. The public facility zone does not require design review. So the different zones have that requirement called out in the code and that's what we follow. And it's not in the public facility zone. And I wasn't really concerned too much because I think, I think it's gonna look really nice. It's gonna, you know, I think the building. Is in need of a refresher and they're gonna put in new landscaping. So. Yeah, it's not, it's not scheduled for it to go to design review.
I wanted to throw in two cents here too. I think the community knows about this pretty well. This is because of the police cars being there for weeks or months or however long it's been. It's been pretty, appears to be common knowledge to me.
Yeah, I think in the beginning, but, you know, right when it first happened, I think people were a little bit concerned about potential traffic and noise. But I think they, you know, now I just hear really positive things, like, you know, what Stephanie said, it's really nice to see it there. And, you know, it always seems to have a peaceful presence.
I'm gonna do a pause here a minute and Katie, take it, we haven't any call-ins. So if not, I think I need a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
Okay. I don't think we need to do a roll call or vote on that, right? Up to my discretion. So at this time, um. I'm just trying to look at our agenda here. Is there anything else that we need to address with the staff at all? Or do we, no, actually, we need a motion. Okay, can you post that motion up there, Katie, so that Mark can see what the motion entails?
I think that was Sandy that spoke, right?
Was it Sandy?
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. No, let me make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolution number P dash twenty twenty-one dash thirty seventy. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna, recommendation to the city council. To amend the general plan use designation for commercial to public. And amend the Fortuna zoning map from neighborhood commercial to public facility at twenty six hundred Newburgh Road.
I will second that.
Good, Stephanie. That's probably the most long distance second the commission's ever had, Steph.
All said, so I guess, Katie, can you call the motion?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Hallie.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Great. Motion carried. I guess the next is, do we have any updates staff communication wise? I defer back to you, Liz.
Um, I can just tell you about what we worked on Friday, which was packet day. So it was a very busy day. We had decided to apply for several headwaters fund grants, which is, you know, managed. And kind of coordinated by the county and then they have a staff and a board that selects the funding once a year, I guess. So we had four projects that we were proposing submitting for. And so we're, Katie and I had, we, the one we worked on was the mill district specific plan grant. So we requested seventy five thousand dollars. We already have grant funding for sixty five thousand dollars. And we are starting planning. You know, consulting and planning for improvements, basically to do public outreach, to create, you know, identify needs. And really, the, the target, the most critical component is infrastructure. So how to lay out an infrastructure plan, including roads and water and sewer and storm drainage. That will really, you know, allow that site to develop properly and also to consider land use. You know, what type of commercial development, what type of a mix and how much of a residential component. So we have that underway. It's not enough to complete that specific plan. So we're going ahead and, you know, reaching out for this other funding source. And then the, let's see, there's a cannabis ordinance grant that we, well, the request was for a cannabis ordinance. And that would be to consider, to do the public outreach, to consider if the city, the public and the council. Want to change the city's ordinance now that, you know, it's been however, like five years or so since the county, counties. You know, cannabis activity. So kind of revisiting that and then the grant would allow, provide for a really. You know, robust public outreach to really get public comment. And then create the ordinance and create handouts and informational items. The Riverfront Park Master Plan would identify desired improvements. Create a conceptual or a master plan and a detailed cost estimate to develop it. And that would, having those parts would then help to get additional funding that would help, you know, to fund actual improvements. And that is on the triangular piece that's just to the north of the River Lodge. There's a vacant parcel there. And the city is about to, I think, complete the purchase of that property from that property owner. So that's a really exciting thing. That's going to preserve that site for a public park, which is gonna be, you know, really. Critical, I think, piece of that riverfront area. And then the other one, the last grant that we applied for funding for is for the Runner Park. To create a benefit or to consider, study. And then if approved, create a benefit assessment district, which would be for the Runner Community Recreation and Park District. Which is a, a commission or committee that's, you know, in place now and they meet. And one of their objectives is to create a pool. And so that benefit assessment district would fund. You know, basically be a tax, I think, on property owners to fund the ongoing maintenance of the pool. So those are the four things that we requested funding for and. You know, as we go through the process, they have a pretty quick turnaround about two months. So we'll find out in the next few months. So. We're really hopeful.
Do we publish those on our website once we get those grants awarded?
Yeah, they would be. Yes.
Any questions of Liz or Katie? See a lot of head shaking, so. Um, I guess at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
Another long distance second.
That's right.
Katie?
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Stephanie, hope your mom gets better quick.
Yes, you, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Really good idea.
I wish I would have mentioned that earlier, but it just dawned on me after we went through everything else, so.
I will, I'm gonna email the city manager right when we get off here, so we don't lose that.
One last question. Do we have other, any big items coming up for the next meeting? Coming up too, and I didn't know if that's gonna impede some things.
We have a subdivision and a design review in the pipeline.